Eleven, welcome to the town council meeting. If you all like to rise, we can say the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Dolan, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
If you could all please stay standing so we can have a moment of silence for those that are serving us abroad and our towns and cities around the state. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, so, we have a public comment tonight. I have one thing that I was given by Margot a couple of seconds ago. It's basically a public notice for the town of Londonderry mosquito control. Yes, we had snow the other day, but we have mosquitoes coming to a theater near you. The mosquito control program begins the week of April eighteenth, two thousand and eleven in the town of Londonderry. Crews from Dragon Mosquito Control will be checking swamps, marshes, woodlands, pools, ditches, storm drains, and other shallow stagnant water for mosquito larvae. When mosquitoes are found, the following insecticides may be used. Control of adult mosquitoes may be done in preparation for old home days and celebrations for the locations around town, namely Town Common, Matthew Thornton Elementary School, the middle school, and the high school. If eastern equine encephalitis or west Nile virus is found in or nearby in Londonderry, then emergency spray treatments will be done to the following locations, which includes all the schools around town and the athletic fields. It is not possible to predict if emergency spraying will be necessary. The spray schedule is based upon mosquito surveillance data, disease test results, and weather conditions. Further communications will be given if the emergency spraying is going to take place. Residents who do not want their property treated must contact Dragon Mosquito Control in writing. I believe that's on the website, correct?
Right.
So if you want to not partake of it, you can just go to the website. The address is there. It's a P.O. box in Stratton, New Hampshire. Be sure you include your name, your address, your phone number, a description of your property with boundaries, and residents who would like to have their stagnant water checked for mosquitoes can also call six oh three nine six four eighty-four hundred or email info at dragonmosquito, all one word, dot com. Again, that's going to be on the website, so if anybody has any questions, they can definitely take a look or call Town Hall. There is no charge for this service. Contact us for more information on spray dates, location, materials used, precautions, or other concerns. So, this is kind of just an FYI that mosquito season is coming. Not soon enough, in my opinion, for the warm weather that is. Bob?
Just out of curiosity, we've had an awful lot of loggers that have been in town, have been doing an awful lot of logging and private property around the town, and a lot of them have left ruts from their skitters and so forth. Has there been any talk about maybe taking a look at some of these, with all the rain and snow, we've had some of these ruts are going to be really full of water and it's going to take a long time to dissipate because of the packing down that the skidder's wheels do?
Is that something that...
We'll look at it. We haven't thought of that.
Yeah. So, good suggestion. Dave can pass that on to Dragon Mosquito. Okay, there's no other questions about that. We can move on to our first item of the night, which is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So, that would be Chief Hart. Would you like to sit, sir?
I think I'll stand there. I don't think it's had to go on for more than an hour. Is this on? I don't think it is.
It's probably shorter than last year.
Next week, I wanted to let you know, next week is National Telecommunications Officers' Week, and it's a job that's commonly referred to as a dispatcher.
I provided a copy of a call recently to the town manager, which, if you haven't listened to it, I would strongly encourage you to do so. My initial intention was to play it here, but it is so emotionally graphic that I felt it wouldn't be wise for the people involved, other than the dispatcher, to constantly have it broadcast over and over again on the meeting schedule. But let me tell you about it. Let me tell you about it because it is a representative call. It's not something that happens once a year or, you know, every couple of months. Rather, it's something that happens all the time. Dispatcher Bob Jones, over twenty years' service to this community, was on that evening. He was on by himself. He was fielding people who come to the police department for questions, whether it be directions or to turn themselves in on a warrant. He was also fielding the phone, constantly ringing, and he's dispatching via the radio. When a call came in, it was a nine-one-one call that came down to us through nine-one-one, and at first it was unclear where the call was coming from. It was a third-party call regarding a suicide that was happening at the time. Immediately, Bob was able to figure out where the location was, and he did that based on his experience and his training, always maintaining as cool and in real time, as you'll hear when you do listen to this. He was able to quickly discern where the event was occurring here in Londonderry. So he called. And when he called, a fourteen-year-old boy in utter panic responded. He was there with his eleven-year-old brother. And what was going on was a suicide at that time. And for the next few minutes, dispatcher Bob Jones, a first responder, let me repeat that, a first responder, because he was the first person on that scene responding to that person who was in need of public safety service. He coached that young boy through, calmed him down, was able to get him to deal with the situation that he was confronted with. He was able to get the brother up so that the brother could then go down and let officers in. He was able to let the fire department know so that emergency service that ultimately saved this person's life was provided. I encourage you to listen to it, because this isn't something that, as I say, happens once a year. Rather, it's what these folks do for us. We think of police as being the first responder, and that's not the fact. The fact is that that dispatcher on the other end of the radio, on the other end of the phone, they save lives very clearly. I encourage you to listen to the tape. Actually, when you use the word "tape," it's not a tape, it's a CD, and even that's going by the way of the dodo bird. Anyway, what I'd like to do tonight is first say thank you as councilors for your support by giving you, and for all those who are concerned, not one taxpayer dollar has been spent in this gift to the council. It's my gift and TCO Supervisor Cindy McCann's gift to you for your support of our police department. So I'm going to approach, give you this, and then I'd like to introduce you to the dispatchers who serve our community.
Thank you.
Now, if I could, I'd like to introduce the members of our police department who serve as telecommunication officers. Next week is Telecommunication Officers' Week nationwide, so from Sunday to Saturday, those of us who serve in the public sector, in police departments and fire departments, will be recognizing the efforts of those who participate as first responders in this way. So why don't we start with Bob Jones? Bob, come on up. I'd like to present you with this. And everyone else can come up, too. Bob? Congratulations. Bob, why don't you say hello to the council? Barbara? And this is his wife, also a twenty-year employee, Barbara Jones. Barbara, thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Outstanding. Cindy Tuck, she wanted to say a few words. Thank you, Cindy. Maria Schatt? Jason Pino? There you go. Thank you. Cindy? And Cindy McCann, who has served as a dispatcher and as a supervisor for about twenty-five years and is soon to be leaving the town of Londonderry. She's going to be retiring this November, so there you go, Cindy. Say hello to the council, please. Thanks for the time you spent on this, and thanks for letting me introduce these first responders of our community to the citizens and to you. What they do is oftentimes the lifeline both to the police officer responding and to the citizen and resident who needs the service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. There's something I could add at this time to this conference, or something I came upon this week, and it's something I learned by coincidence more than anything else, is that we've had a lot of conversation about mutual aid, and, you know, I happened to run across, are people going to Litchfield and then seeing the Hudson ambulance there? I didn't really quite understand it, so started asking some questions and inquiring into, like, why aren't we in Litchfield and why are we with the Hudson ambulance? And here's, I learned something really interesting that I didn't know, is that we send out two paramedics on our ambulances. When we call for mutual aid, it seems that we always call Derry first because they offer the same level of service that we do and send out two paramedics on an ambulance. And inquiring further, the reason we had to go to Litchfield to assist Hudson was they didn't have any paramedics on. So their ambulance came, but we have to send the paramedics for advanced life support. As I continued to ask more questions, it seems that when we go out of town a lot, it's because we have the staffing on where some of the surrounding communities that we, you know, are Wyndham, Auburn, Beckford, Litchfield, Hudson, don't staff the same way we do. So it's very possible when their ambulance shows up, you're not going to get that trained paramedic to help you. So that answers some of the questions we got last year about why we and Derry go back and forth so much, same level of service. It's just really interesting when you think about it. I mean, we are paying for that service, we do get a transport fee, but it's very different than what we offer to all the other communities. So, you know, found that out from the fire guys this week, thought we ought to, you know, I asked them, why don't we know this? They said, well, nobody ever asked. So, nice to know that when they come, they're all trained with advanced life support, so if we need it, we've got it in this community. It's a good thing to have.
And it's also good to know that, you know, providing that to other towns. But also, it answers a couple of questions, too, as far as the service level and, you know, how we were being dinged for that at the time, so.
Absolutely.
Good information.
And to Mr. Coughlin, who won his suit today, who I know from Laffa and everything, and anybody else who, you know, has a problem, we've got the support here to help you. So, use it. You're paying for it.
Thanks, John. Thank you, John. Okay, Chief Hart, Victims Rights Week. Would you be so kind?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that next week is also National Victims Rights Week, and I wanted to let you know of a couple of things that are going on. On Tuesday, the twelfth, the governor and Attorney General Delaney will hold a press conference to officially proclaim that, and there'll also be a memorial service later that day. The reason I wanted to bring it up is because, as you may or may not know, we have a fairly extensive prosecution of crimes here, and one of the important aspects of that is advocacy for victims. It's something we take seriously in our police department, and we really encourage each of the officers to be an advocate for that person who may not have a voice on their own. So I wanted to let you know about that. It's an important piece of the public sector work that we do at the police department, and I wanted to say, you know, thank you to the governor and those members of the legislature and our public leaders who are encouraging remembrance of this week. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. You're making us aware. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time tonight.
My pleasure.
Okay, let's see, we have Board Committee Commission Updates. Pursuant to Section nine point five of the Town Charter, I think this was Tom's baby, to get us to follow something that we haven't really been doing in quite a while, if, to my knowledge, I don't think I've ever seen it done, but pursuant to the Town Charter, Section nine point five, the council is required to meet at least annually with the chairpersons to review significant actions, planned events, planned activities scheduled for this meeting. And today we have the Traffic Safety Committee, Mr. Bob Ramsey, an audience. So Bob, we just kind of wanted to say hi. We wanted to give you a little exposure to people, to basically let us know what the committee does, when and where we meet, and kind of a little information background.
Well, the Traffic Safety Committee came into being in nineteen ninety-three as a traffic safety study committee, and it was put by Regulation ninety-four point one to become a traffic safety committee, and it's responsible for the placing and maintaining of the devices through the Highway Department. We also have some say with the council where, for instance, as an example, the speed limits that we dropped a few years ago in town was based on recommendations by the Traffic Safety Committee to the Town Council. We also have some input for striping and parking signs. We're also the liaison for the citizenship to come to the Traffic Safety Committee to air their grievances and tell us what's bothering them and try to take some steps in order to solve them. Also, in the state of New Hampshire, in order for us to get some of the grants that we get for the police department and the fire department, the Traffic Safety Committee has to sign off on them. So essentially, these are what we essentially do. I think that's about, we meet four times a year, usually the first Monday in April. We meet the second Monday in July because of vacations over the Fourth of July, and so we're essentially, with the exception of July, meet the first Monday of every quarter. We also have specific guidelines if we need some updating or someone has a problem that needs to be taken care of, we can call an emergency meeting. I've been on the committee since ninety-four. I've been, I was vice chairman in ninety-four, and I've been the chairman since, I think, ninety-six.
I appreciate you coming out and talking to us. Does any of the council have any questions for Bob?
Yeah, Bob, a quick question for you. On Butcher Road, you know how the street comes off of one or two, it goes down onto Butcher Road?
It's up there.
So, my daughter, who's almost a young driver here and a number of other young drivers, have asked me, says they feel there should be a stop sign at the end of that road. So they asked me, well, how do I get somebody to do that?
Stops? They could come, what they would do is they would, if they wanted, they'd get a petition up, and they can set, call myself on the number that Margot can give them, and they can call, and we can set a meeting up, they can present their case, and then the council, the committee will vote on it.
So, would you help them through the process? I mean, they're only sixteen, right? Could I put them in touch with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Margot can give the telephone number, and the committee is made up of the chief of police, the fire chief, town manager, the highway department, myself, and Nate Greenberg.
Okay.
So, there might be reasons why we can't. That's where Yanis comes in with his expertise.
Right.
There might be a potential where we might put a yield sign rather than a stop sign, but that's the way it gets presented to us, and anybody can bring that to us at any time, and we, our next meeting will be October, the first Monday in October.
Okay.
So if she wants to call and set up, we'll put her on the agenda when she can bring and present her case.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Tom?
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Frida?
No questions.
Thank you for having me.
No questions.
Thanks again, Bob. I appreciate it. Okay, in attendance tonight, we also have the chair and the vice chair of the planning board. So, Mr. Rugg, you have three on there tonight.
Yes.
We've got you under, let's see, Heritage, International Exchange Committee, and the planning board.
Well, I'm not going to speak for Madam Chairman of the International Exchange Committee because she'd rather do it herself, and I don't want to screw anything up and maintain domestic tranquility, but...
Understood.
I'll report.
If she's watching, she might already know.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's been a few years, I think maybe three, probably four years. I recall the last time, I think, was in October, and I just had a few notes together for my annual report, and now I've got the special annual report, so you can read along with me. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just kind of hit some of the high points, Mr. Chairman. I think a lot, what occurred this past year with the planning board has been a reflection of the economy. There's been a, you know, general slowdown. Change from two thousand and nine is really a fifty-four percent decrease of subdivision lot line adjustment plans, an eleven percent decrease for site plan applications, and a fifty-two percent decrease on signed plans. So, really, there's been a slowdown there. But on the other hand, there's been a seventy percent increase in conceptual discussions. So the development community is getting boys or those that really, you know, I think have feel what is going on, are there and ready to go. So I think this coming year is definitely going to be busier, and we know it definitely is going to be busier. We also added on right over a hundred thousand square feet of commercial and industrial capacity also, so we've been increasing incrementally there. One of the big items we handle is the capital improvement program, and each year we have been making, it's probably more incremental improvements, we've made some major changes, but John Farrell's been chairman of the CIP, and Tim and Sue Hickey also have been good assets, and have simplified it tremendously and made it probably not so much anecdotal for getting something, but at least there's some statistics behind things that are needed versus what's needed and what's wanted. So it's pretty much a streamlined process now. The other big thing, of all the several, this is with workforce housing that we had spent probably, probably two years on, and most of it was because the state basically codified case law, and that was through Senate Bill three forty-two, which was codified as RSA six seventy-four fifty-eight to RSA six seventy-four sixty-one, which took effect January first, two thousand and ten. And this basically said that every municipality has to provide a reasonable and realistic opportunity in the majority of the available land area for development of housing that is affordable to low and moderate income households, which is known as workforce housing, and it's all defined in statute. So what we have, and our ordinance applies to the statute, and basically you say that statute is enabling legislation for us to go and do that. There were some contentious sessions, but I think we'd listened to people and came up with a good work of ordinance, and then what the town council made a request was to reduce the number of units per dwelling from twenty-four to sixteen, which we had started, that took probably a good part of a year in itself, and then we heard from the seniors and their plight, and then made a conditional use permit that they could have up to twenty units. So that was adopted by the town council. I think probably the least amount of pressure that we have in town right now is really from residential housing, and it's a direct reflection of the economy and where the housing industry has gone and probably the lack of demand for single-family housing. In two thousand and nine, the town council established a Economic Development Task Force, and that was pretty much at the urging of the planning board. And through that, we had developed, really, a promotion of Londonderry through appropriate marketing and so forth, and I think John has pretty much taken the leadership with the economic development, and we have a website that's much easier to, you know, for someone who's interested in locating here, developing here, to migrate through and pretty much, you know, streamline that process. Also, in the past year, the planning board has streamlined our design review and regulatory process, that's both the site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, making it at least somewhat user-friendly, and we work closely with Yanis and Dave so that we are pretty much in agreement, because we do not want to compromise the quality that we have in our regulations, and I think there's a good reason. We have our regulations because we've learned the hard way. We've learned from mistakes. We don't want to do them again. Also, we implemented the Northwest Small Area Master Plan, and this is really from, it takes into account Route twenty-eight from Exit Five area in North Londonderry all the way up to the Manchester border. And what we had done is removed several of the parcels around the Exit Five area from the Performance Ovaly District that stretches along that same stretch. And so basically, with this ordinance that we brought to the town council, the town council enacted, allows the placement under the C-two zoning that up there is a mixed or alternative zoning district, which is designed to create a New England Village-style development, and we've actually had three conceptual discussions concerning, it's really the area that's north of Vista Ridge, between Vista Ridge and Route twenty-eight. We've had two conceptual discussions with McDonald's and one conceptual discussion with Outfit called Londonderry Land Development, also known as Coastal Partners. They have presented a little mini mall, a potential restaurant, a potential bank, and some other buildings, and we've just been through design review with them through the Heritage Commission so that they are reflective of the design that is up there, and that probably the motif that sets that area is the bus station. Very nice colonial brick architecture, gabled, you know, sloped roofs, and that's kind of what we look for as a motif. In the past year also, Chinburg Builders has presented a proposal in conceptual discussion for a hundred and fifty-nine residential units off of Old Dairy Road, and they are utilizing our conservation subdivision ordinance. And the proposal involves two hundred and eleven acres, and out of that, a hundred and two acres will be left as open space, and what conservation subdivision does is concentrate the housing in a smaller area so you can preserve the desirable features of the land, and that creates a lot of the open space look. Also, what has taken a lot of the board's time, probably over the last three, three and a half years, is working with the landowners in the airport area, and this is in preparation for the development of that area, both industrially and commercially. And what we initially proposed by Andre and Tim was a flexible industrial district, but that ended up into really a contest between probably the two major landowners. So, as we had done our research on what the town can do for planning and looking at the two thousand and three design charrette that took a look at that whole area, we looked at, and actually, the town council adopted what's known as a gateway business district. And this is an ordinance that really provides for mixing both industrial and commercial together in kind of like a campus-style format, so that you could have, you know, businesses up there that manufacture things, but also provide the commercial services for the employees that work there as a banking, someplace to get lunch, or someplace to eat, get gasoline, and so forth. But during the discussion, we also had looked at basically extending it to large acreage in town because this gives the planning board the control, and that's what we found through the discussions with the landowners, that we didn't really have the control. They were the ones like setting the tone. They couldn't agree, we'd suggest things, they still couldn't agree. So, it really puts the onus upon the town through the planning board for the, you know, doing the basic planning of that area. So the change really that went between this and what's known as a plan unit development, or PUD, which is becoming, you know, I think into people's vocabulary now, which is good, it's a positive thing, is really mixing both residential and commercial together. So you're providing housing, different types of housing, but also the services that those housing needs and everything, along with at least a reasonable transportation network that doesn't burden the town. And that's what we're looking at for the north area town also, is a road network that doesn't burden the town. We want to keep it on to the state highways and the interstate system so we don't get bogged down because we do have enough traffic problems ourselves. So that was an extension of really the gateway business district that probably has been an evolved process, evolving process, for probably at least, maybe, you know, going back three, four years. So, it was a while in development. And then the big thing that we have to, we are contending with, we have had four conceptual discussions with, is the proposal for Woodmont Commons by Pillsbury Realty Development, LLC. And this is a very iterative process, and very early on, I think both the board and our staff are looking for public input, because this is a major, major impact for the town, and we really want the town involved in the whole planning of this whole thing. It isn't, the planning board's, you know, duties, it isn't the town council's duties, it's the whole town's duties to give the input, and what we're looking for is a working relationship with the townspeople, because we're all stakeholders in this. We all have something to gain, we all have something to lose. We don't want to lose anything. We want to take a very careful look at it and see if it's going to do what people feel comfortable with, you know, and it's trying to reach that comfort level. And we've been through the charrette that they had back in September, which is over seven days. That was their input. We're at the point now where we want to design it ourselves. We want to have our input into it. So, and this is what we're... We're at the point now we want to design it ourselves. We want to have our input into it. So and this is what we're, you know, endeavoring to do. So we're being very patient about it and that's because we want to listen to people. We want to hear from people first before, we're not going to tell them what we want or anything. And I think it'll be an evolving process of what the developer proposes, what's going to be workable for us and it's going to be listening to, to people to, as we bring that to fruition. And the other thing that we accomplished was growth management, which we, the economy has really helped us with growth management. So this is the fourth year that, that we are under sustainable development. And probably one of the big things is that in the school system right now, there's probably in excess of a thousand spaces for students. So we have excess capacity in our school system. And a lot of that is over the, probably the last, let's say, five to six years, we've had a declining school population. And when, over the last three years, we've pretty much had a static town population. In fact, I had a conversation, this was probably about a year ago, with Peter Francis, who is a demographer. And he actually said that London Dairy is losing some population and explained to me how London Dairy's population is rapidly aging. As we aren't keeping our, there's not enough young people being born in town compared to the aging of the population that's in town. This is a common problem throughout the state also, the population aging and to a very certain extent all of New England. So it's not a problem that's going to be solved here locally, but it's something that we should be concerned about because when we go to sell our houses, we want to sell to younger people. One, we want to be able to have them to afford them. We want to see a nice return, which the last three years, those nice returns probably aren't there. Someone probably bought their house twenty, thirty years ago, yes, but someone probably has bought in the last five years, no. And at least we want some equity there that, and we all look at housing as an investment, but it's basically, it's your domicile, it's where you live. And Kathy Douris, our secretary, has found bigger and better things and is working at BAA Systems and I saw a town meeting and she loves the job. So
Good to hear.
So she's doing well and we're, one headcount shorter, but we'll, we make do.
Thanks, Art.
And if you have any questions on me, feel free to ask. There's more detail here in our thing that I worked on for, actually I was late. Margot chastised me several times, but she was very forgiving.
Well, I appreciate you coming, Art. Council, I'm sure you have some questions. Joe?
I've been there for eleven years.
Mr. Dolan?
Well, thanks, Art. Certainly a major player in, in how our community's been shaped over the past couple of decades. I appreciate your service. Can you, can you bring us up to date as to the engagement with Woodmont Commons? With some of their earlier charrettes, they had spoken about breaking ground, hopefully in two thousand and eleven, twelve time period. Is that, is that timetable?
It's way, way off target.
Moving, moving out?
It's way, way off target. First thing we have to accomplish is a master plan and we are far from coming up with a master plan and that's where we're looking for, you know, the community input, but I think we're at the point where we need to put something concrete together as a town. And then, you know, go through the, the process, both with the developer and townspeople, what they like and what they don't like. And we have a conceptual discussion with them on the thirteenth of April, which is a Wednesday. And Wednesday's going to be a busy night for us. We have a number of public hearings and this will be actually the last item and we're looking for, looking for input and we're going to see where, where they are at. They've held sessions Thursday night from seven to nine and Saturday mornings from nine to eleven AM for public input and getting people's feelings. And also, you know, I think as far as what we, we're seeing as designs is only what they're proposing. It's not what we are looking at yet. And I know this last session that we had back in the second Wednesday in March, we had made some, some headway in at least coming down with what we require in that ordinance for uses and limited one of them. I mean, any, any consensus is, you know, and it was pretty much a consensus is, I think, a major step. Because, you know, it's, I think we've got our ideas, we're listening mode or as I just say, because I'm a scientist, we're discovery mode and we haven't put things together yet. And hopefully they come back with something a little more concrete. And I think you'll be hearing a little more from us and from staff on, you know, how we want it to, to look and where our focus, focus should be on it. You know, we're looking for probably predominantly residential as far as what's on the Westley side of I ninety-three and to concentrate probably any mixed, mixed use, but it's, right now, a lot of, a lot of it's just speculation on it and we want to, we want to hear the input at our meetings and everything and that's where, you know, it does the most good.
Second question is, in the airport, south of the airport area in the, in the industrial zone, what's your sense that, you mentioned the two land, two primary landowners, what's your sense about their willingness or eagerness to begin that development as the access road to ever turnpike nears completion?
Well, both landowners were very supportive of the Gateway District concept and everything and we've, we've got a modeling system where we can put in things and we're going to use this for Woodmont also. We can put in things and see what, what, what traffic impacts are. You know, what we can get, like return on our tax rate, things like that. But that's, that's a little ways off as far as the airport area is concerned, but certainly once that road is open, there's a good increase in value of their property. And, you know, I think you're going to see them paying more, more taxes. But probably Andre is his best to give the details of anything there because I just know overall what's, what's happening and I'm not part of the details and I don't really interact with the landowners that much other than that, you know, the meetings that we've had and once in a while I get a call from them and, you know, tell them, talk to town staff, don't talk to me. Or if you want to talk to me, no planning board meeting.
Good. Sounds like you have a busy year ahead of you.
Yes, it's going to be challenging and I think it's going to be challenging for the community and I would encourage really everyone to get involved. And I think they know how to contact us and I think the council should be as engaged in this as the, the planning board is and as each resident should be.
Just to add to that about, probably around the beginning of February, I went as the council's representative to a to a troops ceremony that was going over to Afghanistan. And I had the occasion to have a private conversation with the governor. And the governor was very supportive of continuing to find funding for Pettingill Road, sees the vision there, understands it would help the state as well. And his parting words to me was, is, you know, I really believe I can, you know, I can get this done and I'm going to continue working on it. So it does have exposure to the governor's luncheon. We'll see what he can do.
Good info.
Yeah. Probably what I can add on, also what we've, that we presented tonight also is a update of the impact fee ordinance for the western part of Route twenty-eight. And that's what the council's worked on, I mean, not the council, pardon me. Planning board has worked on since the beginning of the year and all the work has really been done by both probably Tim and Andre. The other thing is we're going to start our master planning process. And this is another cycle and we're starting to get the census data in. So that, we're going to start that process and there'll be discussions on how we go about that and everything. So we definitely need all the help we can get. We're going to be busy and I don't know about going to extra meetings, but that's up to the planning board. We might have.
Figures now that I'm the liaison.
Since you joined us, Tom, we'll, we'll keep you busy.
I somehow knew this was going to get incorporated, but I guess Tom will leave with you now. Go ahead.
Okay, Tom.
Any questions?
I guess the, my, my question was, were the meetings shorter now since you streamlined things? But that's good.
Yes. It's made things much easier because the bulk of the work is really done by the staff. And it's only if the developer decides that he doesn't really want to go through the staff, he wants to deal directly with the planning board, that's where we have a bit of a problem and we have to explain. You know, they basically have three choices on what to do and that is to work with the staff, which is one, one avenue of the process. Or they can get all the, basically the, what they need for application acceptance together, or they can start all over again. Basically a choice between the devil and the deep blue sea, but we're strongly encouraging working with staff because that's when the plan comes and it's least at the point where we don't have to do the planning. Because years ago, the planning board did a lot of planning. That's when we met every Wednesday night and from seven till, usually the time we get through is between one to two AM in the morning. And there were times we were there to three or three-thirty AM. And we figured that since we don't receive any compensation for it, why should we do in the work of that engineer or, you know, a planner should be doing. So it did take very long for us to get smart about it, you know.
Are you finding that a greater percentage of people are, you know, going through staff now?
Yes. Yes. And we hear from Elmer Pease once in a while who has his own little program, but we strongly encourage him to work with staff. So there are those that like to bring their case directly to the planning board and, you know, we can only do so much. We can only take so much of the public's time to do the planning and that's really with the staff. That's what their function is.
Yeah. The only thing I was going to ask is Joe and I went to the Saturday meeting with Woodmont and I thought it was very, you know, helpful. But I was wondering if, and since it's their facility, is there any possibility that they could do something to tape it and broadcast it?
We can ask. We can ask.
I had given Donnie Grover contact information over there. She'd asked me the same question when I was over taping my show last week.
Yeah.
Trying to get them in touch to see if they could broadcast it.
Yeah, great.
I've been to three of the sessions and I've, I'm learning too. So it's educational. And it's, you can really talk with, you know, the landowner and say what, you know, I mean, I got my opinions on it, which are only my opinions and they'll probably come out as the planning board gets into it as, as a board. It'll, you know, I think we have to, we have to hold the developer accountable for everything. So that's.
Thank you. Just to agree?
Joe? I just wanted to thank you for your services all these many years and I know that with all the challenges coming up in the future with all these developments, I'm glad to have you there.
Well, I look at it as a challenge. I love, I love challenges and I like to be successful also. So I might be a little slower doing things and I may be rather methodical, but that's my.
That's the scientist.
That's the scientist.
I'm just looking forward to working with you. I'm an alternate.
Yeah. Every step forward, you take two steps backwards. You say, am I getting someplace?
Progress.
That's kind of, you know, that's kind of the nature of it. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom had a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Art, that I did have an opportunity to meet with Senator Ayotte last week and, and took the opportunity to ask her about Pettingill Road project and any federal help she might be able to help. And although she's not in favor of any earmarks, she did, she did say she was following the project closely, was very interested in it and was very impressed with what Senator Carson was doing at the state.
Yes, because Sharon has been very, very active and very, you know, I think right, right on it to get what we can for the, you know, that roadway. Because I mean, it's, it's the key for, you know, the growth in the area. It's key, I think, for at least industrial and commercial growth that I think has got more benefits for taxpayers than, than anything else. And I think we like, want to see that area grow. I think we want to see it grow at even keel that we have control of and that is, you know, not, not out of, out of control. If we do our planning right, it's.
Just, Ed?
My name is Andre Yaren, Community Development Director. Just, just on that note regarding your conversation with Senator Ayotte, we all, Dave and I also had an opportunity to meet with Congressman Jenta, who was very interested in our project as well. And he worked and has submitted a letter of recommendation for application that we have in for the Economic Development Administration funds for the sewer portion of the Pettingill Road project. And to get to your point a little bit earlier with regard to the property owners in that area, there are four primary property owners in the, in the Pettingill Road area between Industrial Drive and the Airport Access Road. And they are the FAA, the King family, Nash and Tamposi group and the, and the airport. They pretty much comprise the eight hundred and thirty-three acres that are immediately salsa the airport. And they've been very supportive over the last, I guess they've been here eleven years, eleven years that we've been working on it. And now that the project is, is moving forward, now it's just a, almost a holding pattern. I think we have some interest in the area, but we want to see if that road is going to be built. Recently attended a, a business luncheon, actually a business breakfast meeting last Friday. Lot of interest from the business group. About seventy-five people showed up for that particular event. Lot of interest in, in that particular road and, and when it's going to happen. And the fact that the ETA on the, the Airport Access Road is now moved to December of this year is even greater interest and something happening there. But obviously, getting funding for that Pettingill Road is going to be a key element to them making it invested in the property.
Thanks, Andre. Also, Tom?
I guess that leaves me.
Yep.
Art, thank you very much for all your years of hard work and every committee and commission and everything you've been on for all these years and keep up the good work.
Well, yeah, thank you for that.
And there's a lot of it ahead.
Appreciate it. But, yeah, it's a challenge. I feel that one owes to one's community and it's kind of because my father was always active in the local politics, my grandfather, great-grandfather. So it's kind of a rug family tradition, you know. Get accused of talking too much.
Well, we appreciate it and looking forward to seeing you getting on top of things and working through the processes.
Yes, that's what it is, is working through the process and it's listening, you know, and, you know, it sounds like at times or appears at times we might not be too attentive, but we're listening and having put things together yet. So, you know, just keep letting us know. So I'll do the Heritage Commission also, since I'm here. And Heritage Commission is also a historic district commission and it's five pieces of property in town that are actually in a historic district. That's the town common, the town woodlot, a town forest, that's just to the south and to the west of that. The Historical Society property, you have the Morrison House Museum, Grange number forty-four, which is owned by the Grange. And then Tulichfield Road, which is owned by Notfield Publishing, Crowsconnet LLC. And basically, any changes of those properties have to go through the ordinance process. In fact, it's our zoning ordinance section two point six point four. So any changes have to come before the Heritage Commission and the Heritage Commission, you know, makes a quasi judicial decision on what, what can be done and everything. We haven't had that occur at least for quite a while. So we're pretty, pretty static there. We kind of oversee what we've had happen on the woodlot was a, was, was forested and we work with the Conservation Commission on that. And that's completed and also a lot of the invasive species have been, you know, removed and everything. We're just keeping an eye on how, how that grows up and everything. We really don't have the, the funds to probably develop a picnic area or anything, but we'll let things grow and then we'll see what, what looks as a nice area. Because I know there's an opening that's just to the west of the common itself, but I think at one time was suggested for parking at the time a proposed skating rink was, but that's, that goes back about ten years and we haven't heard anything on it since. So I don't think that's going to happen. Also, probably the bulk of our part is really on design review process where we hear from developers and really work with them on the architectural design, some of the landscaping and everything. And even though last year we only had four, some of them were a little involved, like McDonald's, which took, that was two, two iterations. There's some mixed feelings on the design of the building. But I'm sure we're going to have a round or several rounds with them when it comes to the design for Exit Five. And we're going to probably be a little more rigorous on that because of the designs of other buildings and some of the paces that we put Coastal Partners through. And they've appeared before us twice and still working on a little bit of it yet. And they'll probably be before the planning board and I'm sure you're, you're still our ex officio, Sean.
I am. I'll be there.
It's the same as the ex officio to the planning board, that you're a full voting member. And of the seven positions, seven full positions on the Heritage Commission, one of them is the ex officio. Planning board has nine full positions and one of them is the ex officio. The council, ex officio is the town manager, which is filled right now with a school board member, John LaFerrier, and also administrative person from town, which is filled by our assistant assessor. And planning board has three alternates and Heritage Commission can have up to five alternates by, by statute.
So it has a good representation from the citizens? So it has a good representation from the citizens?
Yes. Yep. Oh, yes. We have some difference of opinion, even with the Heritage Commission, on how things should look, so, but it's all done by a majority vote and I don't think I have anything, anything else to add. I could read the whole thing here, but...
[laughing]
We've, we've applied for, we're also certified local government, which in the historical circles of the state of New Hampshire, we can apply for grants. We have applied for some, haven't received them, so grants are kind of short. We also applied for a, the Moose Plate Grant and that wasn't received. Usually with a grant, you have to contribute so much money, but also you need a structure and it's probably more applicable to the Historical Society and that certain things we can do for applying for grants. And that's probably an area we're deficient in is grant writing. If anyone wants to help us with grants, we welcome it. And I think I had to, we, we lost John Dolphardt last year, who was a very active member. And John was very helpful in the, the Historical Preservation Task Force. And he did a lot of identifying of properties. And one of the things that the Heritage Commission has to do, that properties less than five years old, we need to update it. And that'll be done probably by volunteers or possible Eagle Scout projects, so any Eagle Scouts listening, we need to help. Because initially, that was done by, I think, two Eagle Scouts as their projects. So we have a hundred-and-thirty-nine properties that we consider historic and that is basically any property that's in excess of a hundred years old. And now we've probably got, between the five years, we've probably got more properties that are on there that are a hundred years old. The other part is it has to be seventy-five percent original on the outside and it has to, has to have some architectural significance or some historical significance. And then the fourth thing is basically at the discretion of the Heritage Commission.
Cool.
And we're also working on legislation to help, these things keep popping in my mind. We're working on, with the Preservation Alliance, with the New Hampshire, you know, the, the state historical resources, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission and Rockingham Planning Commission to seek legislation that would help owners of historic properties. And that would be enabling legislation that a community could adopt. We did try, two years ago, when Representative Valdezaro submitted legislation and were praised for the work that we did, but there was a problem. And the assessor from the city of Portsmouth had a big problem because probably a third of the properties could qualify and that would wreak havoc with the, the tax rate on those that didn't have any historic property. Very good, very good point. And that's part of what we're gonna have to work with is probably with the Assessors Association. So, we don't want people to be burdened that are paying their taxes and not have an old property, but at least some fairness in there as someone who has something historic. And that came out of the, the task force that we had from people that had historic properties, so. Lot of work in progress.
Yeah.
There's always more things to do than we accomplish, so.
You can only do so many.
Yep.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
You're welcome.
Mr. Rugg, thank you very much for coming out and briefing us on everything and nice little chat. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. While we're still in public comment, is there anybody else that has anything else they wanna bring before the council tonight? Okay, saying none. I guess we are now closing public comment. All right. Public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing, please.
I move second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes affirmative?
Five-zero.
Okay, we're in public hearing. First resolution that we have tonight, Resolution two thousand and eleven dash oh-four. Can I get somebody to read it?
Sure.
Page six. Yeah, page six.
Resolution two thousand and eleven dash oh-four, resolution relative to the discontinuance of Highway Portion of Scobypond Road, first reading three-twenty-one-eleven, second reading public hearing oh-four-oh-four-eleven. Whereas the town council, in accordance with RSA two-thirty-one forty-three, has received a petition to discontinue and relinquish all public interest in a portion of Class Six Highway known as Scobypond Road between Woods Ave and Brewster Road and whereas the matter of discontinuing a highway under RSA two-thirty-one colon forty-three is within the authority of the town council and whereas the aforementioned highway was discontinued subject to gates and bars by voters at the nineteen-thirty-two town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council that the discontinuance of a portion of Scobey Road Drive as shown on the map entitled approximate location, class five road to be abandoned, tax map sixteen, comma lots thirty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-three, sixty-three, comma eighty-one, ninety-eight, comma ninety-nine, and one hundred, prepared by Jones and Beach Engineering Incorporated, Stratum, New Hampshire, dated March second, two thousand and eleven, is hereby approved, subject to the conditions that the trustee of, of the Kenneth A. Lorden Trust shall indemnify and hold harmless the town of Lunenary for many claims arising from the town council's decision to discontinue said portions of Scobypond Road.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We're looking for adoption tonight. Yep, yep, yep. So, do we have any comments from the council first? Or do you wanna hear from staff? Are we hearing from staff tonight or is...
Just the applicants.
Okay, the applicants, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, if you'd like to make your presentation, that'd be great.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jonathan Ring from Jonesa Beach Engineers in Stratum. And with me tonight is Dave Lozey from Chinburg Builders, who is looking to do a development, which Mr. Rugg mentioned on the Lorden property, which is up on the screen. That's the conceptual plan for all of it, but right now we're working on phase one, which is in the upper right-hand corner, which is fifty lots. And also, we have Ann Crati here, who is helping us with this effort. So, by general way of introduction, we are talking about the old Scobypond Road from Woods Avenue at the top down to Brewster Road at the bottom, which was discontinued subject to gates and bars at the town meeting in nineteen-thirty-two. And we're asking or petitioning that the town council would permanently abandon all public rights and completely discontinue the remaining Class Six portion of the road between the end of Woods Avenue, as it exists today, and the Brewster Road at the south side, the southeasterly side. And most of this road does cross the Lorden property as it's shown on that map up above, which is map sixteen, lot thirty-eight, so.
I'd be happy to turn it over to Ann. And then we can answer any questions you might have.
The statute that governs, that gives the town council authority to discontinue the road is two-thirty-one forty-three and it allows the town council to discontinue the road unless, if there aren't any abutters that are using it for access. And in this case, it's not used at the public access road and has gates and bars since nineteen-thirty-two.
So, we'd be happy to answer any questions and I'm not sure if staff is gonna comment, but that's up to them. Okay. Tim?
Just quickly, Tim Thompson, town plan. On the screen, I have the, the cover sheet, the concept overview plan from the most recent submission. The Class Six portion of the roadway is highlighted in the cloud, it read on the screen. This was discovered through the design review process. The surveyors had discovered that this was an old portion of the road that does not appear on any maps, has not appeared in any of the town maps in many years. Again, it was discontinued back in nineteen-thirty-two. From our understanding and knowledge of the properties that have developed adjacent to this, we're not aware of anybody utilizing the road for any access at this time.
Thank you very much. Okay, bringing it back to the council. Tom?
Any, any abutters, raise any objections to this?
Not that we've heard from yet. There may be somebody here. They were noticed for the...
Have you contacted the abutters?
Hasn't.
Not directly, no.
Okay. Well, we have a, it seems like we have some...
Just for information, all the abutters were notified by certified mail of this year.
Thank you.
I just, if we have some abutters that like to speak to it, I'd certainly like to hear their, their comments when we get through the council.
We'll go through the council, yeah. John?
I'll yield.
Yep, okay. First of the council?
Go ahead.
Okay. Sir, you had your, you had them? If you'd like to come forward, state your name for the record and your address.
John Weigler, seventy-four page road. I own the parcel which that road also runs through, which is on your tax map sixteen dash one hundred. And it, it actually comes from the end of Brewster Road and that's my sole access to that parcel of land right there. So that's why I'm opposed to having it discontinued. I don't have any access anywhere else on that, except that road.
John, have you had a discussion with these guys?
I have not, no. First, first I heard.
Your access is from the lower side up to it, right? From Brewster Road in?
Well, I, you know, I'm not too sure. It's unclear what you're doing here. So it looks like to me you're doing the whole road. And this is, this is my parcel right here.
Yeah, we were proposing the entire road.
Right. So, I mean, this is my access into this parcel, that's all. I mean, I have access, I have another parcel that I own ninety-nine, but it also accesses that there and I also have another parcel, I mean, it comes off the backside too, off of, you know, Potruch Lane, but...
It's my understanding that you would still retain the private access into your property, but the public rights for the public to pass through there would be discontinued.
Right, well, that's why...
But you would still have private access to your property.
I'll just assume to keep it public right now myself.
Well, then one option is to just go from the end of Woods Avenue down to, or Woods Road, down to the southeasterly lot line of Lorden.
I mean, what was the, what's the reasoning for trying to close it?
It's not being used up on that end.
So just leave it?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may suggest...
Yes, sir.
You know, we've run into this on planning board issues before. Sir, it sounds very much to me like you and John need to sit down and have a conversation and, and figure this out from the standpoint of that, you know, how you're going to work with him and he's gonna work with you before this resolution can be considered.
That's a great point and I was thinking myself, but we have one more person I'd like to comment?
Absolutely.
So, yeah. Ma'am, if you'd like to come up, please state your name and your address for the record?
Thank you.
Thank you.
[laughing]
You can, you can bend it down, it adjusts.
[laughing]
I have that problem too. It's a very tall world.
My name's Eugenia Snyder. I'm a, the transmission real estate agent for Public Service Company of New Hampshire and we actually use that road to access the transmission line corridor primarily because of the wetlands that we're trying to avoid. So, we would have some concern about how we would still have that access and avoid the wetlands as much as possible.
And I would love to get your number, but under the statute, all utility rights remain. All utility rights that exist would remain.
Right, but our, our utility rights are for the corridor, not specifically for the access road.
How do you folks come in?
We, we actually, we owned the lot directly under Mr. Weigler and we come up Brewster Road and then...
Go right through his land in... Okay.
Okay, so taking Counselor Farrell's comments under advisement, I think that at this point there's enough to say that some conversations need to be had, so why don't we, why don't you plan on coming back to us? Do you have a comment, sir? Yep, please come forward.
You know, if you can bring the mic down.
Oh, actually, yes, sir. Hold on one second, we can bring the mic down to you. That's fine.
Thank you. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, Andre.
You got it?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jim Wallach, thirty Brewster Road. And I don't know if the gentlemen of the council know that the historical significance of Brewster Road, which has changed names several times over the past two-hundred years, but I do believe it's the oldest continually-used dirt road in the country. I haven't been able to find any documentation that would prove me otherwise, except for a couple of clamshell roads down in the Carolinas. The other important aspect of this area is its wildlife significance. Aside from deer and wild turkey, there are moose out there constantly. It's a wonderful area to be able to go for a walk or picnic. There's blueberry bushes along the way. There has been some logging up in the area over the past few years. I'm not sure if you gentlemen are aware of it, but it's a, it is a beautiful area that I understand it's, the future is coming, but a little section of Lunenary should be left alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So, Dave, with the comments that we have for the public... What would our, what are our options tonight?
Well, I would suggest that you continue the public hearing until your April eighteenth meeting, which would eliminate the need to repost and notify the abutters and hopefully by the eighteenth, we'll have some more information regarding the discussions between the abutters.
Okay. So, does the council agreeable to that?
There's no other comments. I can, I can, you know, agree with David, motion accordingly.
Okay. First of the council? Okay, any of the other public, any other comments? So what we're planning on doing tonight, if, if the council agrees, we're going to basically push this out to a further, a future public hearing, probably at our next council meeting, I'm assuming, and that'll allow you guys to kinda get together and see if everything fits and everybody's happy. So, that'd be great. So that's the plan. So, John?
So, before we make that motion, if no one else, if you have something to say, come up and say it tonight, so it's, it's out in public record. Otherwise, I'm gonna make a motion and then we're gonna move on.
John, before you do that, I think it'd be really important to have the two people who came up and spoke tonight actually get, you know, because they're gonna talk to each other, but I'd like to know what exactly the resolution was for these particular townspeople.
Well, they, we're gonna, they're going to go to these people...
Right.
And they have to basically say, "This is what we need." They're gonna have to come to an agreement before we do anything, so we're gonna know that.
I'd like to know how they resolve this all.
Essentially, how that works is, and just from when we do this on the planning board is, is that it's really outside of our purview, so what happens is, is that they go up and have a discussion. If they come to some sort of an agreement and, and Mr. Weigler comes back and RG and E, excuse me, PS and H comes back and everyone has said that, you know, "Okay, we're in agreement." As long as they're in agreement, we can move on. So that's usually how it works.
Right. And that's all I'm asking for, is to know what type of agreement it was.
Sure. Well, this is a new one in my, my three years, so.
That's good.
So, John, do you want to make one?
So I'll move that we continue the public hearing till April eighteenth, that's seven.
Need a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair votes affirmative? Five-zero. Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we have ordinance two thousand and eleven dash oh-two. Can I get someone to please read up? Oh, thank you.
Ordinance two thousand and eleven dash oh-two, introduced on March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. Public hearing is being held on April fourth today, two thousand and eleven. An amendment to the zoning ordinance to reflect updated traffic impact fee methodology slash corridor study and to establish new rates. Whereas the planning board has periodically reviewed and amended traffic impact fee rates to reflect current development patents and revised development forecasts. And whereas the planning board has completed a corridor and impact fee methodology study on the Route twenty-eight western segment, which simplifies the administration and calculation of the impact fees, updates construction costs for improvements, and sets forth the impact fees based on the private development share of said improvements. And whereas the planning board has recommended that the town council act favorably upon the request, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Lunenary that the town zoning ordinance be amended to reference the updated Route twenty-eight western segment traffic impact fee methodology slash corridor study in section one-point-two-point-six-point-one. Adopt said study and establish new impact fee rates and implement rates in accordance with alternative two as stipulated in the methodology report.
Okay. So I need a second on that?
I'd second it.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and Tim's gonna make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Just briefly to give you a background on why we're doing this and what's going on here. The main reason we're updating the impact fee methodology is the last time we did this section of Route twenty-eight was in February of two thousand and one. We've obviously had quite a bit of development in this area of the corridor and this part of town since that time. We've had the benefits of some updated traffic studies, prepared for the town by StanTech, other private development projects, as well as New Hampshire DOT in accordance with the exit five improvements. And the costs of the corridor improvements have increased significantly since two thousand and one, but our fees are still based on those two thousand and one construction costs. So what we're talking about amending is the impact fee study and methodology, and then that section of the zoning ordinance that references it. What we're trying to do here is utilize the existing basic methodology that was originally done by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission in two thousand and one. Utilize those updated corridor improvement studies from StanTech and NHDOT to simplify our impact fee calculation to a single per PM tree, PM peak hour trip fee, and to account for the expected improvements and increases, cost improvements escalation in our impact fee structure. The section of the ordinance that we're talking about adopting is simply adding the words "prepared by the community development department, StanTech Consulting Services," and, to the reference, the New Hampshire Route twenty-eight western corridor study. We are talking about an area made up of about six hundred acres, studied area in the exit five. About four hundred and seventy of those acres are developable. Highlighted in this map, these outlined parcels are the primary vacant parcels located in this portion of town that would be directly contributing to the Route twenty-eight western segment of the corridor. We're utilizing two thousand and eleven as our base year for trips from our StanTech traffic study. We've utilized several assumptions in terms of determining the future land use consistent with our existing zoning. We're utilizing a background growth rate of one percent, which is what DOT and the town utilizes for background growth, and our tip distribution is per the most recent study that was prepared for the town by StanTech. What that roughly translates to is we've basically gone through each of these parcels that we've highlighted, come up with what we believe would be the highest and best, most intense use of these properties, and that results in approximately four thousand new PM peak hour trips generated by these areas within the Route twenty-eight corridor. How that's compromised is forty-five percent of the traffic out there is the volume that's there today. Sixteen percent is our anticipated background growth that would occur naturally, and then thirty-nine percent of the traffic would be then generated by the future development of those parcels within the corridor. We estimated the cost of the corridor improvements to be about nineteen point nine million, based on a cost-share breakdown of town and state of sixty-one percent, and development being thirty-nine percent, again, based on those shares of traffic that are generated from the study of what the traffic is today. I've included an average of twenty trips per year from outside the corridor. Basically, when we do a traffic impact fee study for any project, we do, we require them to distribute their trips to various studied corridors. And on average, over the past decade or so, we've seen about fifteen to twenty trips per year from outside this studied area that do have an impact. Lastly, we're recommending, in order to keep our fees consistent and up to date with the corridor construction costs, we're recommending that there be a three and a half percent fee escalation for each year past two thousand and eleven, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're ten years behind the eight ball again in the future. Again, the corridor is broken down into different major intersections and roadway segments. The cost estimates were prepared by StanTech Consulting Services. These do not include right-of-way acquisition or water and sewer upgrades. And as you can see, the costs escalate from about nineteen point nine million dollars in today's dollars to about twenty-three point six million dollars in two thousand and fifteen. If we base our impact fee purely on those numbers and the methodology, we would be looking at approximately a hundred and nineteen percent increase in our impact fee. Again, the cost breakdown has shifted and the cost improvements have escalated significantly. Under the original two thousand and one study, we were looking at a fifty-fifty split between development and town and state. We're now looking at a sixty-one thirty-nine percent based on the development that has taken place over the past decade or so along this period. In terms of implementing the fee, the planning board did raise the concern that the increase based on the methodology may have some impact on our economic development efforts. Staff then developed three implementation alternatives, and the planning board chose alternative two, which I'll summarize here in their motion that they recommended to the council. If we were to purely base our impact fee on the methodology numbers themselves, we'd be looking at going from nine hundred and twelve dollars today's impact fees to a nineteen hundred and ninety-eight, uh, impact fee for this year, escalating up to twenty-three thirteen in the year two thousand and sixteen. The alternative recommended by the planning board is to do an incremental implementation over the first two years, that we would charge fifty percent of the increase in two thousand and eleven, seventy-five percent in the year two thousand and twelve, and then from that point forward, base the numbers on the methodology, which would result in an eleven eighty-nine impact fee this year, eighteen thirty-six in two thousand and twelve, and then following the impact fee schedule beyond that. The third implementation alternative, which the board thought was too gradual, was a fifty percent, sixty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent alternative. Those fees are outlined there. But again, the planning board, by a majority vote, I think the vote was eight to one, recommended that this be the fee schedule recommended by the, uh, planning board, that the council adopt this schedule. The lone dissenting vote was to utilize the methodology and not provide any discount in the initial years. Be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll start with questions, I guess.
I sat through this hearing, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Tom?
What's the, uh, the unit for the fee? The per acre or?
It's per new PM peak hour trip. When a project comes in and does a traffic impact study, they're required to give us the number of daily trips and then AM and PM peak hour trips. So this is based on the number of new trips that any development would generate between the hours of four and six PM on this section of the corridor. So for example, a project like a big box retailer, you might see a total of five thousand new trips daily. You might see three hundred trips in the PM peak, but there's a breakdown on those PM peak trips of how many are new trips that are being generated specifically by that development, and those that are already on the corridor who just happen to be stopping by at this particular location because it's on their way. So there's a pass-by percentage that's taken into account, and that's all done through the traffic study procedure that goes through the planning board review process, and then those fees will be assessed at the time of CO before each individual building.
And how does this fee structure compare with local surrounding communities?
It's, it's very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison because it's specifically based on this particular section of Route twenty-eight and the specific costs of improvements. So you really can't do an apples-to-apples comparison. We're basing this on the nineteen point nine million dollars, the, the cost of improvements, and then that thirty-nine percent being the cost share for development, then breaking that down by the number of trips that we anticipate these areas developing, contributing to the corridor. So you really can't make a comparison between community to community on these types of studies.
Andre?
Tim's absolutely right, but in contrast, um, most of the, this was predicated on work that was done by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission back in the late nineties, early two thousand. So this methodology has been around for some, some time.
So the methodology used in order to come up with the, uh, impact fee system, looking at existing trips, looking at potential trips, and then determining what the impact's going to be on a corridor, and then devising a plan in order to correct that, and then getting a fee based on, uh, based on the corrections you're going to make to the corridor. That methodology is pretty much the same no matter where you go. It's just how those get divvied up and what-
What the cost is for each individual corridor.
Correct. And, um, so, um, so in that, in, in that regard, and the PM peak hour, um, trips, where you base your, um, your improvements on the PM peak hour trip, because that's the worst-case scenario, no matter where you go. So that's pretty standard around the country as well.
What, are you, are you comfortable that when we, when we're looking at potential development, we have to understand that our competition is Huxit, Derry, Bedford, so forth? You know, and when businesses evaluate where they're going to do their development, how do, how do we shake out against our competition? Will this tip the scales that they might, it might steer them to a different community? I guess that's the, that's the real question that's rolling around in my head. How do you feel about it?
It, it might. It, it depends on, it really depends on the corridor. I would probably argue that, um, you know, that, say, if we're competing against Huxit, you know, that Route twenty-eight corridor is probably just as busy as our Route twenty-eight corridor here, and therefore the improvements they're going to need are probably going to be comparable. So if they use the same type of methodology, I, I think it has to come out the same, whether it's nineteen point nine million dollars worth of improvements, or maybe in their case, it could be thirty million dollars worth of improvements. Therefore, I, I think you're, you know, I think we're comparable. And the, and the one thing that we have, that we have utilized in the past is that, um, you know, if, if, if a developer comes in and they make improvements to the corridor consistent with our plan, we're not going to charge them impact fee, they're, because they have made improvements to the corridor consistent with our plan, therefore we probably recommend that we waive that, because the work has been done.
Any, any major development that has off-site improvements, it, it's, it's very typical in Londonary and anywhere that if, you know, say the impact fee comes out to forty thousand dollars, and they do seventy thousand dollars worth of off-site improvements that are consistent with the corridor study, we basically credit the entirety of the impact fees and they pay no impact fee in that situation.
I, I guess I would recommend that if, if we start to hear comments from developers that, gee, you know, I was, I was thinking about Londonary, but your impact fee caused me to think about this other community instead. I think that's something, that's feedback that I think we'd want to hear, so we can, we can make adjustments if we have to.
Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, keep in mind, this is reflective to, um, the work that's needed to be done on the corridor, you know, and sometime in the future. You know, if we're fortunate enough, you know, the, you know, that the ten-year plan and so on and so forth is, you know, gets funded at an adequate level, then a lot of this, you know, a lot of the town share will probably be taken up by the, you know, by that ten-year plan, and then the difference could be made up by the, uh, by the impact fees that we've collected. But, uh, on the other hand, but if it's not funded and, and, and we reduce our impact fee, we're going to be, we won't have sufficient funds in order to improve the corridor.
Most economic studies I've seen in terms of where impact fees rate in terms of overall competitiveness is relatively low on the list in terms of the, the major deciding factors in locating a business.
And it's consistent with economic development data. I mean, it's, we're not talking a whole lot on my butt, but you are right. I mean, it, it's, it's a decision that if, you know, if it caused me, um, ten grand more in Londonary than Huxit, Bedford, or whatever, then, yeah, it puts us at a disadvantage. That's the sole reason why they're-
And that's the main reason why the board has recommended we incrementally implement this over the next three years.
I just, just would ask that, keep your ear to the ground and let us know if you're starting to hear that chatter.
Yeah. And, and, but that's the reason why the alternative two was the, to be a graduated scale, so we were hopefully somewhat consistent with our economic development goals.
And with this, with this alternative that has been recommended, the proposed two thousand and eleven fee is relatively consistent with the fee that we have in one of the sections one oh-two currently, which is already over eleven hundred dollars per PM, uh, peak hour trip in that section of the corridor. Thank you.
Tim or Andre, what's the process? When do you collect the fee? At the planning stage or when they're done or?
The fee is determined at the planning board level when the traffic study is reviewed and approved by the planning board. At that point, when a builder goes and pulls a building permit, they're required to submit a form that calculates all the impact fees. At that point, the building division in our department will assess, here's your traffic impact fee, here's your police and fire impact fees, we go down the list. They're assessed at that time, they're payable and required to be due prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the facility.
So if, right before the certificate of occupancy is issued, they then come in and say, well, I, our fee's forty grand, but we've done seventy grand of improvements, then-
Correct.
Do you offset that?
And that's a hearing that happens here with the council.
Yeah. And more likely, we're going to know that beforehand anyways, because they're going to be submitting an off-site improvement plan showing what they're going to return to the corridor, and that way we can take that into consideration as we tabulate in the, uh-
I think the most recent one that happened here with the council was with Elliott Medical Facility a few years back. They had done, oh, for three hundred thousand dollars worth of off-site improvements, and they came to the council and were granted the credit to their impact fee based on what the impact fee was versus the cost of the improvements.
Thank you.
Just on, um, if you can go to alternative three for a second, just looking at the, um, the scale, eleven hundred to fourteen hundred, then eighteen hundred, and if you go back to, uh, alternatives two, there's, there's a giant increase in two thousand and twelve. And my question was, you said, um, commenting about alternative three, that, uh, it wasn't as aggressive of a increase and-
It was, it was the least aggressive increase.
Was that because of the fact that you, you would think you would need the money quicker? Because of age?
It was, it's purely based on gradually implementing this wage scale, because we realized that it's a quite a jump from nine twelve to where we, where we're going to be. Therefore, alternate, alternative three, was this a, a means by which they're gradually getting to a lot further, more, a lot further than alternative two had done?
Because do they, do they look at it when they, are they going to see the, the schedule of how it's-
This schedule will be, will be published and established as part of the impact fee form.
I'm just thinking, I, I, I would, I would love to have the economy turn around in two thousand and twelve, but if you look at alternative three, again, um, it seems like a, a more even-keeled graduation. And I don't know if that's something that, again, as Tom alluded to, would be, this is very aggressive, next year I have to, you know, jump that giant percent, why wouldn't it be more? And, and if it's, if it's a case where, you know, we'll need the money upfront a little bit faster, then it would make sense, but if it wasn't that case, why wouldn't we go to something like this? I think you'd be able to talk about it. Mary?
I just wanted to comment on why we chose alternative two as opposed to alternative one, which was actually the one I was voting for. You have to understand that this is a ten-year, we have not raised our impact fees in ten years. So we're trying to make up for something that hasn't happened. If I were to come in today and I were going to build, I would have an expectation that I would have to pay the, the hundred percent of what's proposed here. Not the fifty, not the seventy-five, but the hundred percent, because that's what the market is right now. So we're being kind to the, um, developers that are coming in by saying, we understand, you know, we didn't, we let the ball drop. I mean, seriously, this should have been done all along. And, and because it has not been done, we are paying, playing catch-up. And I think it's important for us to, um, do it in the most reasonable way that we can, and the majority of the planning board felt that alternative two was that.
Yeah, the only thing I would say to that is that, you know, we're, we're in competition with a lot of other towns, and I, I understand that we need to make up, make it, you know, make up some groundwork, but that may cause us to be out of the competition if, um, if it's too aggressive. That's the only, that was my only concern.
Well, or the other way you could look at this, Joe, is that, um, people looking to develop in our town will come in when it's only at fifty percent, or when it's only at seventy-five percent. They would get their business here faster. Okay, so you could look at it as, it as an incentive. If they go to Hudson or, you know, I mean, the nearby towns, they're already at a hundred percent. They're already at what the market is right now. Okay, we are not.
Right. And so the advantage would be in, in alternative three, again, I'm just proposing, I'm just trying to, to get some thought process on it, is to, to keep our advantage, being one of the lowest around, and being on a scale over the next few years, and that may be something that, as Counsel Tom said, that might be attractive to the, to the builders as well.
The, the one part of this that I, I kind of glossed over, but it's important to note, is in doing this revision to the impact fee methodology, I'm proposing a change to how we implement the impact fee assessment. Right now, there's two different ways we calculate impact fees based on our current methodology. If it's in a studied development area, there's an extremely complicated matrix that has development-linked costs associated with potential development of each area. So the impact fee may not be nine hundred and twelve dollars per trip for one of those studied areas. It may be significantly more, depending on specifically where it's located. What I've tried to do with this update is try to simplify that and increase the predictability of a developer coming into town, so that they know, here's the fee, period, per PM peak hour trip, there's no variables in terms of where I am in the corridor, and how I'm being developed, and what section of this, the road I'm on. I'm trying to simplify things so that it's a much more predictable cost that the development community can anticipate. Because right now, quite frankly, if somebody were to come in in one of these studied parcels under today's impact fee methodology, I couldn't tell them right now what the PM peak hour trip fee would be until I have a traffic study-
I understand that, but your scale would still be the same.
It, it, right now-
For the three.
I mean, under the old methodology, and what Tim is saying, no, is that we, we had a, Southern New Hampshire Plan had to put together this elaborate matrix of how you calculate that particular, uh, development area, depending on what the PM peak hour trips are. What Tim, attempted to do here is to simplify it, to say that no matter where you are, that the trip costs are going to be X all the time, therefore, no matter if you're within the study area or outside a study area, you're going to pay the same fee.
Because right now, there are some areas within Route twenty-eight western segment where the per PM peak hour trip fee may be like three thousand dollars per trip, and this may actually be a decrease to the actual fee that's in today's complicated matrix. It's, it's extremely difficult to administer right now, given the way it was set up, but it's, it's a traffic engineer's dream, but a planner's nightmare.
I've been doing it for twenty years, there's no problem for me.
The only other point that I'd like to make is if we go to alternative three, using the slower rate as you come forward, you're really doing a disservice to the town people here now, because if, if development comes in, the roads have to be built. And if they, if the impact fee is what it is, and it doesn't cover the cost of that road, then we have to make up the difference. Right?
That is a correct statement.
So I, I really, I would urge you to go with alternative one, but the planning board would urge you to go to with-
But also, and Joe, and also, I just want to add another thing on there, and this we looked at their traffic and study and calculated the traffic impact fee, it was, it was fairly high. What they opted to do was to look at the way they govern their shifts and say, you know what, we'll lessen our impact on a PM peak hour, which we want, you know, and that way it lessens the whole congestion during the PM, the rush hour. And so they structured their, their work shifts before and after PM peak hours, therefore reduced significantly their impact fee, and that's the kind of innovation that, you know, hopefully will happen with other projects.
Coca-Cola does a little bit. Yeah, Coca-Cola.
All right. Joe, you good?
Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
The other top.
When you say two thousand and twelve, is that fiscal or calendar year?
I'm considering this to be calendar year right now. So two thousand and eleven would be the remainder of this year, would be, under the proposed alternative two, would be eleven eighty-nine for the remainder of calendar year two thousand and eleven, and then January first, it would go to the eighteen thirty-six.
And the other question I had is, if, if you know, the, how many times do you actually collect cash out of these things, or are you always offsetting improvements?
I'd say probably seventy percent of the time it's the fee, and then thirty percent is credit based on off-site improvements.
Okay. Thanks. Tom, do you want?
You guys held public hearings on this when it came up to.
Yes.
I mean, what kind of pushback did you get from the developers or, or business community?
None. I will say that there was one project that before I posted the ordinance for public hearing, did submit their application the day before I posted it, so they would be subject to today's impact fees, but outside of that, I've had no feedback whatsoever.
So it was an incentive?
Mr., Mr. Farrell?
All right, so something we're missing here is, is that, one is, is that a lot of the road construction we do and everything, because asphalt's a petroleum product, we all know what the prices have done in the last ten years, so costs are up significantly. The other piece is, and I did confer with Dave as well, and the question's already been asked and answered, is, is that if they don't pay, we pay, because the road gets done either way, we can't have a failed road. And for any of you that have attended a planning board meeting with traffic studies and everything else, it's probably the most spirited discussions that happen in this community. So the roads do get built one way or the other, safety comes first. This is probably the best negotiating tool the planning board, the planner, and the economic development people have from the standpoint of how you work with a developer. So all things to take into consideration. We are, we haven't lost money yet, but if we don't do something, we're going to.
All right, any other, any other comments from the public? Okay, all right.
I'm Ron, flooding board chair. I just wanted to acknowledge the staff, because this is all developed within house. And we definitely have the resources, we also have the time, but usually we have the resources but not the time to do it, that's when it gets contracted out, but this is all done within house, Tim and Andre, so I'd like to.
That's why it took longer than normal.
There's, there's, there's really many things, and, I mean, we're playing catch-up here, and we're, we're trying our, our best to help the taxpayer in town, but also not to shut off development from coming in, so it's a balancing act.
Okay. Thank you. All right, from my end of it, I read through it, it was a very detailed presentation. I think that, I would agree with Mary, I think that when it comes to playing catch-up, we're kind of in that mode right now, and it's very necessary that we do that because we talk about how, you know, a lot of people talk about Pettingill Road and developing that, and nobody really wants to pay for it as far as it coming out of taxpayers' pocket. I'm probably one of them, although I understand the value of what the opportunity brings if it does get developed. So this is kind of the same thing. If the developer wants to come in and they want to build something, well, they all should be expected to help fix the area if they're going to be, you know, adding a lot of significant traffic to it. It's a kind of an important detail that, that has to be, you know, done. So I would say that it's, it's well overdue, and it has been a long time since they were all stated, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Chair votes affirmative, five zero, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And while I still do have the floor, I probably should have said this under public comment, just to, for everybody listening and watching, April is Autism Awareness Month. It's a cause that's near and dear to my heart, and I'd also encourage those here in London area, if you're interested, the Joint Loss Management Committee is organizing an apple blossom walk for autism on May first. There's information on the town website, it's twenty-five dollars per walker. We'd certainly encourage anybody to go out there, enjoy a nice sunny day in May, walking through the orchards. It was a very successful venture last year, and I hope for even more successful this year.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we, so we have to continue the public hearing, so we don't need a motion to close it because we're going to leave it open until the next meeting?
For the, I think you made a motion to continue the.
Till April eighteenth.
Previous publication, probably close this one.
Okay. So I need a motion to come out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero, chair votes affirmative. Okay, there is no old business this week. We have new business, there is an order to expend some funds, can I get somebody to read it?
I'll move to read it in a, in a box. Let me have a second.
A second?
A second, okay.
Order number two thousand and eleven dash zero five, an order relative to the expenditure of maintenance trust funds for various projects, reading April fourth, two thousand and eleven. Whereas voters since two thousand and three have approved funding for the maintenance, repair of public buildings and grounds in the town, and whereas expenditures have been made for various projects, specifically, number one, install floodlights at the highway garage at a cost of eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Number two, HVAC repairs at Leach Library at a cost of seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and twelve cents. Number three, HVAC repairs at Town Hall at a cost of four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents. And number four, plumbing, fire suppression, and structural analysis at the senior center at a cost of three thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Now, therefore, be it ordered by the town council or the town of London area, that the town treasurer is hereby ordered to expend five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents for the aforementioned repairs and improvements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Tom?
Dave, are we about to get whacked with a pretty significant library roof bill? Is that, is that coming?
Well, that project will, will occur this summer, that's correct.
Summertime, okay, and it's the same source of funds?
Yes, that's correct.
Didn't we say that we were going to look at the warranty for the roof?
We will investigate that.
Because it's, it sounds like that some of the products that we use might have been incorrect products.
We're going to take a look at that, the probability of collecting it, you know, if the project was two or three years ago, we'd have a much better chance of recovering. We're going to go through that process, but I'm not planning on receiving any recovery money, so we're setting aside funds in the trust fund to take care of that work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, five zero, motion passes. Okay, let's see, that's it for new business. Approval of minutes from the council meeting of three twenty-one eleven. I looked them over, I didn't see any issues. Any of the council?
Motion for approval, I present.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, motion passes five zero. Dave? Oh, actually, we'll go, yeah, actually, let's start with Dave. Go ahead, Dave. Town manager report.
Three things, there's an open house at the new Northwest Fire Station on Saturday, April sixteenth, I believe, in one to three, at twenty-eight Gruninger Field Road, they ribbon cutting and just tours the facility. You may recall last year, the senior affairs committee met with the council regarding the senior housing project. The goal is they want to build some senior units for affordable housing on Samlin Road, which is land owned by the town, take of a non-payment tax, the formula clear junkyard area has been remediated. Sarah Landry, our senior affairs director, was notified that the funding for the project is looking quite favorable at this point. So you may recall that they agreed to come back with the council, talk about a land transfer, talk about support for a community development block grant fund, and also generally support the project. So they're going to come in on the eighteenth to talk about beginning that process, including a letter of support from the town to Hut for that, for that project, so they'll be in the Jennifer April eighteenth. The last issue is, we talked about updating the municipal code at our last meeting, and that's one of the processes and goals we had about trying to make us more efficient. I transferred most of the chapters from Title One, which is about twenty-six, twenty-seven chapters, to town council affairs review. Coincidentally, Tom raised an issue with what our rules and procedures are, and within Title One, there's a requirement currently that we use Robert's Rules of Order, which our town council advisor would not do, since there's so many different versions and iterations of Robert's Rules of Order. So Tom sent some information on to me he was familiar with, and what I envisioned is something similar to the Ethics Code, which is essentially a compilation of current practice and the requirements in either our municipal code or our, our town charter. And so what I envision is that once the council reviews this, in conjunction with the municipal code, you can adopt your rules and procedure, and then every year, a new council would, would sit down, review that code, either re-adopt it or amend it to their, to their interest. So, and again, that's going to be, I think we have six titles in our code, we're reviewing five of them. The sixth title, which is not Title Six, I think it's Title Three, is the zoning ordinances. And since the planning board does that on an ongoing basis, approved by the council, I don't think there's a need to bring the entire thing back to the council for approvals, if doing it on an ongoing basis, but.
Sure.
So we hope to have Title One before you, realistically, probably the first meeting in May. You will require a public hearing, it is pretty lengthy, so I'll bring it to you in one meeting, and then the council makes a decision at that point whether you want to have a public hearing, the entire title, or you want to segment it. I mean, there's, there's no time deadline on this project, but we do need to do it. There's a requirement in the charter, you have to re-qualify your ordinances once every ten years, so now it's timely to complete that project.
So we're the lucky council?
We're the lucky council.
Okay, is that all you got, Dave?
So, yeah, thanks.
All right. Council liaison assignments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
If you may, if I may.
Absolutely.
Dave, we have a demos, demolition schedule for North Fire yet?
We do, it will be, they, they completed their survey of the property, they did find some asbestos, not a lot, so we received, we actually had ten bidders to demolish the property. We actually selected the second lowest bidder as being the most qualified, and, but we have to go back to him and renegotiate since part of the, all the bids did not include removal of asbestos. All that's going to happen probably end of this month, beginning of May, which gives us enough time to remediate the soils underneath it to get reimbursed from the state prior to June.
That's what I was saying, do we have enough runway to?
Yeah, we essentially worked back from June third to make sure we had enough time to make sure the work is done and that we're properly reimbursed by DES.
Good.
Cool. Okay. Liaison assignments, John?
I have no meeting.
Okay, Tom, I don't have any report.
No meeting since?
No meeting since? Okay.
I had a traffic safety today. We had a brief discussion about signs up at the New Market Basket as far as some parking stuff. The commission basically decided to, between the chair and Bob and the chief of police, they're going to basically make sure that we're doing things in accordance to, you